Okay, we are adjourned. Well, uh, we're not adjourned. Wow.
That was the fastest meeting ever.
Everybody, thank you for showing up. Wow. I might need a cup of coffee. Sorry, Bella. Welcome. We are starting our board meeting for today, October 12th. Thank you, everyone that has joined us in person as well as on Zoom. We always appreciate everyone's attendance, time, and opinion. I also would just like to point out, the entire board is here except for James Turnin today, so he is not with us. But he will be missed, but we will go on. So let's start off with a moment of silence, please. Thank you. And for all who are able and willing, please stand for the Fledge of Allegiance.
The Fledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and then just looking at the agenda, do we have any revisions? Or are we ready to approve? Any revisions? Okay. And so all approve of the agenda say aye?
Aye.
Chair approves. All right. And the minutes from our last school board meeting as well as our board work session, were there any corrections to the minutes? I believe there was one before, but that was already handled before it came out. Correct. So we can move on with the minutes. So let's start with the highlight of our meeting, as always, our spotlight.
Now, I'm gonna welcome up Dr. Holly Brokens. She is the principal at Glenwood Elementary. And I think this is the first time you'll have met Holly in person. So Holly, so glad to have you here and excited to hear all the great things going on at Glenwood.
Well, thank you for having me here this evening. Good evening, Dr. Furman and members of the board. I am Dr. Holly Brokens, and I'm the principal at Glenwood Elementary. This is my second year here as principal, and I have enjoyed every moment of being at Glenwood. It's a very special community, and I'm very proud to be the principal there. So this evening, we are going to spotlight for due the Glenwood Annual African American Read-Ins, which is held at Glenwood during Black History Month, and was started several years ago by our instructional coach Jill Tolzma, along with Dr. Kristi Dean, the former principal at Glenwood. And so you're going to be seeing a video and hearing Ms. Tolzma explaining to you what it is that you're seeing.
Good evening, board members, Dr. Furman, and the greater Decatur community. As part of our district's goal to advance racial equity through developing cultural humility, Glenwood hosts an annual African American Read-In each year in February. This event supports our work around increasing cross-cultural knowledge and engagement and improving culture for students and staff. In an effort to make literacy a significant part of Black History Month, the Black Caucus of the National Council of Teachers of English created African American Read-Ins almost 30 years ago. They've been happening all over the country every year since. Inspired by this work, Glenwood wanted to bring this experience to our students. The purpose of an African American Read-In is to celebrate the work of African American authors, to lift up African American experiences, and to explore the beautiful diversity present in literature. With the help of members of the district equity team, we focus on selecting books that reflect the vast experiences, perspectives, and stories present in this rich literature. Each guest receives a selected book in advance to read to a class. This gives students the opportunity to listen to excellent literature while also engaging with Black community members that lead and contribute in countless ways to our community. Our first year, we have the honor of welcoming former Decatur Mayor Elizabeth Wilson to read to Ms. Jolly's second grade class. Even with last year's challenges, we were able to host our second annual African American Read-In virtually. Dr. Maria Carst Darfen, former superintendent of Atlanta Public Schools, was a special guest reader at our second annual African American Read-In. This year, our third annual African American Read-In will be held on Friday, February 4th, 2022. This event will kick off our month-long celebration of Black history. We are in the process of securing a special surprise guest speaker and reader. We'd love for you all to join us. More details to follow.
Thank you so much. We are hoping that this year, we may be able to host this event in person. However, if not, we will absolutely do a phenomenal job of hosting it virtually. Are there any questions?
Well, thank you so much for putting that together. That was great. That was really nice to see, and I'm glad that you were able to continue it even during these different times that we're going through right now. So the superintendent shared with me that when we have the spotlight with the schools, we will also have some artwork showcased.
Yes.
So I also wanted to just thank you and your staff for bringing in the artwork and just lighting up our boardroom today. We really appreciate that.
Thank you so much. Yes, you can see it right over there. Ms. Nene Howard is our art teacher, and she is just phenomenal with the kids. They are always doing very exciting and beautiful projects in arts, and we're very pleased and proud. All right, well, thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Brokens.
Okay, all right. So now we're moving on to public comment, but as of a few minutes ago, we didn't have public comment anymore, Shannon? Did you not? Okay, so we will move on from public comments on to superintendent.
All right, thank you. Uh, let's see, Esther, next, do I, let me see if I can figure this out. Ooh, that's one off, okay. Is there one way in here? Let's see, all right. Should be able to figure this out.
Stand by. Give me a second.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have a joke?
Looks so intimidating up there on that screen. Oops, that's my email. It's a lot. There we go. Okay, thank you, Esther. All right, well, greetings, board members. Greetings, everyone here in the audience. Thank you for being here tonight. Got several comments to share tonight. And so the agenda, I'm gonna go over some general updates, share some celebrations, and also talk about our student advisory team that is gonna be starting to meet. We'll have our first meeting next month, or next week. And then just talk quickly about some COVID updates. So I wanted to provide the board with some general updates about some of the work that's been happening, particularly that I've been engaging in throughout the month since the previous meeting. So first of all, I did complete the Aspiring Superintendent's Academy for Female Leaders, offered by AASA. It was a phenomenal experience getting to engage with other world-renowned superintendents from around the nation, meeting researchers, meeting other superintendents, having one-on-ones with mentors. It was an awesome experience and just learned a lot, got to network with a lot of amazing people. So it was one of those experiences, when you sit in a room and it's all female leaders, you kinda, you can let your guard down a little bit and really just talk about issues that impact female leaders. So that was really refreshing. And then turned around and went to the new superintendent induction that is offered by the Georgia Superintendent's Association, and noticed the stark contrast from new superintendents in Georgia of the 16 that were in attendance, only two were female. So that is something to call out, is how can we grow and develop female leaders? Women make up about 75% of the population of workers in education, but only represent 25% of superintendents. So there is a discrepancy there. So really consciously, it woken, it woke me up to, what are the efforts as a superintendent that I can do to help other female leaders grow and develop those skills? So just one of those things that you realize the difference when you're in a room, and then you come back and you're like, wow, okay. Lenita and I attended our second session of the Budget and Finance Institute, offered by GSSA. It has been a very intense institute. We have learned a great deal, and it has been very helpful as we start taking the steps in initial planning for our budget season coming up, and it's been very helpful to learn from some experts in the field that are CFOs in districts across the state, as well as some other expert superintendents. So that has been very beneficial. Our last session is the second week in November, and I'm really excited for that session because we do a lot of hands-on activities in the last session to get up and gearing up for the, for the budget season. So we'll be able to kind of go through some spreadsheets with the team, put in numbers, start planning out our, not planning out the calendar, but putting the numbers in and getting some projections. So that'll be a really great session. And then I learned this from a leader that I used to work for in my previous school district, and it was sharing the books that he read with the school system. So actually reading three books at the same time. So one of them is, I think, helped me develop my understanding of, as a new superintendent, how to manage and collaborate with your board, and that is one that was recommended by Valerie Wilson from GSSA. This book, Building Great School Board and Superintendent's Teams, and that has been really, really informative. The second book, I've been reading this for a while now, How to Be an Anti-Racist, by Dr. Abram. And then our third book is actually a book that we are reading as an executive, as a full cabinet, called Dare to Lead. And we are doing that as a cabinet book study, and each month, one of the cabinet members takes a lead and leads us through a session. So some really great learning in the district that we are all engaging in there. Did have lots of various stakeholder meetings in the past month, our teacher advisory council meeting met, and some of the highlights from that meeting are just the overall shortage of substitute teachers. So what I'll do is I go through these stakeholder meetings, just kind of talk about some of the themes that came up. So substitute teacher shortage is impacting our schools on a daily basis. So I've got some ideas on what we're doing to try to ameliorate that issue. The other issue that our staff advisory, our teacher advisory council talked about is just this overall feeling of being very overwhelmed with doing education, doing the work that we normally do in a school year, plus on top of that, all the added layers that we have with COVID, coming up with your lesson plans to engage students in concurrent learning, or helping your colleagues cover classes, because there's a higher number of teachers out and higher number of students out, working collaboratively on unit lesson plans as a team to make sure that everyone's covered. So just this very, very general feeling of being overwhelmed by our teachers. Also met with my classified staff advisory committee, same, same there, they echoed the same thing, that just there's a general feeling of being overwhelmed as a staff. And I'll kind of share my comments about this a little more personally, about that feeling, but that is one that is shared also in our classified staff, our bus drivers, our school nutrition workers, custodians, maintenance workers, paraprofessionals, clerical staff are all part of this advisory team. Another issue that they brought up is just also reminding me as a superintendent to make sure that we pay attention and review and look at our salary schedules for our classified staff, to make sure that they are competitive. And I was glad to be able to share with them that Ms. Barum and Ms. Walker are looking into those, and will be presenting some information to the board in the upcoming months. For principal, oh, I'll skip down to the principal check-in. So I also started a monthly check-in just with my principals, just to hear from them on how things are going in the system. And they shared that same feeling of being overwhelmed and being just really put to the hard work that they do and the long hours. And I remember what it was like to be a principal, and I can't imagine being a principal in the times of COVID. I remember 5:30 in the morning, you get up, you've got your text message from two teachers or a teacher that's gonna be out that day, didn't have time to put in a sub, is dealing with a sick child. So you immediately start at 5:30 thinking, okay, how do I cover this teacher's classes? How do we put together, make sure that there's people in there so the students can learn that day? But then they get to school, and lo and behold, three or one student, or however many students may have tested positive, or got notification that a student is tested positive. So then they have to get to work on the communication protocols and the contact tracing and supporting that process. And what they shared is, you know, for the most part, they go through that, and then it's, the day's over. So then they've gotta do all the rest of the things after the teachers have left, after the students have left. So I feel that with my, with my principals as well. The sub-issue as well came up with that group. Also had our SCL team meeting, our first System Charter Leadership Team meeting, and that was last, was that last night, Courtney? No, oh, you're sorry, Court, no. Now I have two Cortneys in here. Courtney, right now, that was last week. Was it last week?
Yeah.
Okay, gosh, this time is flying by. Other than the System Charter Leadership Team, is a principal, as well as one of the members of their school leadership team, serve on the system-level team. And this team, it was great to meet these, this group of leaders and another layer of our governance system here in our charter school system. And we are getting them geared up to start looking at our charter, reviewing the charter, talking with the members of their community, people in their schools, about what do they like about our charter that's in there, what are things that they may want to see change, or what are some innovative practices that we could incorporate the next time around? So really starting at that ground level when it comes to looking at our charter for next year and using our System Charter Leadership Team and our school leadership teams as an essential component of that. Let's see, principal, oh, Chamber of Commerce, that was a great meeting. I've been attending the Decab Chamber of Commerce meetings, and they're very informative, and it's been a great network to really connect with and hear about opportunities outside of Decatur for how the school system here can engage with other resources through Decab Chamber. So that has been really great. And then I also meet monthly with several of our community members, Doug Faust and Gail Rothman, and I always have touch base once a, once a month, have lunch, and chat about what's going on between the systems. And also Andrea Arnold, our city manager, her and I also have a weekly meeting. Not too much to bring you up to date on there, but I did meet with Elizabeth Alongo. She is the head of school for the Global Village Project School, which is housed in the, is that the Methodist Church?
Decatur Presbyterian.
Decatur Presbyterian Church. And her and I have had a really great opportunity to connect and learn from each other as system leaders. Really, she serves as kind of their superintendent, and has been amazing to touch base with her and get to know some of the challenges that they face and how we can collaborate as two school systems, kind of right next to each other. So that's been a really great, great meeting there. Also have been to several community events, also a couple of high school football games. I tried to go to the softball senior night, but sadly, I got there and their game had been canceled from the other school, but it was nice to see the girls out there throwing. And I'll tell you, those girls have some strong arms. I was watching them throw the balls, and I was like, wow, they've got some, they've got, they've got some training to do if I'm gonna try to go out and throw another pitch in the football game. Also was really excited to go to the Decatur Track Team inaugural 5K event at Legacy Park. That was really amazing. They did a very small one this time, but next year, they wanna gear up and do a much bigger 5K. They're looking at changing the week and doing it some, closer to Halloween, and maybe having it be a classroom-themed event, and it's a good way for the track team to raise some funds for what they do. Also got on my bike and made a loop through Porch Fest. It was a little crowded, so I decided to, well, hear the bands a little bit and then make my way home. But it was a nice event, and it was good to see people out and about in our communities. Also wanna share that we are working on a partnership with Kennesaw State. They have a new dean, Dean Up, and he reached out to me over the summer, and we have several really exciting initiatives that we're working on with the School of Cause of Education from Kennesaw State. One is an alternative teacher certification route for classified staff. And what we're looking at for this one, it will start, we're getting interest right now, we're working on all the details, and we're hoping to implement this next year. But what we're looking at is giving classified staff who may not have the financial resources that other people have available to help them grow into a higher-level position. So what we're looking at is it'll be an online academy where they can stay late after a, after work, engage online in the learning. The thing I like about this partnership is we also, as a school system, get to help design the program. What does it look like? If we know equity is at our heart, if we know culturally-relevant teaching practices are at the heart of what we do, they'll incorporate that into the program. So they'll be delivering teachers, certified teachers to us that know our system, that have been trained in what we believe in as a school system. And then also what we're looking at is paying a stipend for them to complete the program so that they can help pay for some of their tuition, so it's not as much of a financial burden for those staff members. They also have several really cool programs. One is an avatar lab that you can use for teacher professional learning, an interactive research lab. So if you've got a problem of practice that you're trying to figure out how to solve this problem, you can go and use their interactive lab. And they also have several mobile technology supports. One is an iSteam and then a mobile Maker Bus, and we're looking at how we can bring those here to City Schools of Decatur for our students to engage in some enhanced technology and engineering activities. And then just lastly, just continuing all the other work with my staff, I've got a great team, completed all of their pre-evaluations with all my direct reports, which includes executive cabinet and principals, reviewed all the annual goals for my Wilson Center staff, and also with the principals, reviewed their baseline data and their school improvement plan, continue to have one-on-ones with executive staff members, and then we have initiated our data, our building our data culture, and we will be delivering the first session of that tomorrow with principals. And then they will be redelivering those, kind of like a train-the-trainer model, and redelivering that information to their staff on workdays. So some celebrations, all the milestones, data is in and calculated, so we can share some really great results, and some, look at some areas that we have some opportunities for improvement. You will see across the board, our reading levels are really good. So for eighth grade, seventh grade and sixth grade, eighth and sixth grade, we ranked second in the state when it came to students, percentage of students reading at or above grade level. For seventh grade, we were fifth. And then reading is definitely our strong point. As you look at the data across these levels, you will see our reading is strong. English Language Arts is not as strong, but still really high. I'm very proud of where we are as a school system achieving in Language Arts. And then math, you'll notice that pattern is a little bit not as high as the other ones, but still a really good, you think there's 180 school systems in the state of Georgia, so to be even in the top 20 is an amazing honor. So doing really well in these areas. Overall Milestones Assessment Scores for our elementary schools. Huge shout-out to our elementary school teachers. Look at our reading levels in third, fourth, and fifth grade. We are first, ranked first in the state with the percentage of students reading above or at, above or at grade level or above, excuse me, in fourth grade, third grade, and second and fifth grade. So really huge shout-out to our elementary school teachers. And this is, it measures here in third grade, but we know that foundation has been laid in our early elementary schools, in kindergarten through second grade. And these aren't results just the teacher that they had at the year, these are results that build up over time. So just a huge shout-out to our teachers for the amazing jobs that they do. We are seeing results in our students, and it's a huge celebration. I'm just gonna touch on this quickly. The Teaching and Learning Team is gonna dig into these results a little bit more, but we do have our official SAT results, and we saw a huge growth in our SAT results. When I looked at the data, I found that we were number one in the state for our school district when it comes to SAT scores. Someone else said we were second, but I have to double-check that, but we, my, when I looked at the chart and sorted it, we were number one. But I think a huge celebration here is paying the debt to our Black students. We saw major growth in the achievement scores for our Black students. And to me, this really speaks to the foundation that has been laid and the very dedicated work of Dr. Huddleston and her team to get the equity work as part of what we do each and every day. It is not something we just do to check a box. Equity work is the, is the food that we eat, it's the water we drink, it is what we, the light that we see through. So this is where we start seeing how we pay the educational debt, is when we look at these overall achievement results for our students of color. So huge shout-out to Dr. Huddleston and her team for the hard work over the past five, five years, Lily? Four. It probably feels like five. So she has just done a great job, and kudos to everyone in our school system, because this is the work of an entire system, not one person. So thank you, board, as well, for your support and backing of our equity work. We wouldn't be here today if we didn't have the support of our school board. Some other big celebrations, we have our Oakhurst Elementary. They won, oh, I've got a typo there, the National Blue Ribbon School Award. This is a very prestigious award. It's not an easy award to be given. It was a lot of work by the, by the team at Oakhurst, a lot of work to submit the application. And it's a huge honor for Oakhurst to be awarded a national, as a National Blue Ribbon School for High Achievement. I also wanna, I'm not gonna steal all the comments. I know Tasha's got some additional comments about the debate team, but our debate team is doing really, really well. They advanced into the nationals, and that's a huge, huge win for our debate team, which is some Renfro students and some high school students. Also wanna give a shout-out to Mr. Dwayne Spruill from our Career Academy at the high school. He completed a successful review, monitoring, and risk assessment, which is great news for our school system, and he received lots and lots of commendations, particularly as it relates to the achievement levels of his students when it comes to their end-of-packway assessments. Also, great commendations in there about really using local labor data, so helps to have great cabinet members like Lenita and Adina to support him with those programs and participate in providing that data and input. We will get our full report in January, but it's a huge accomplishment for Mr. Spruill and his team at the high school. And then my last congratulations, I think, is celebrating Esther and several other team members who helped him write a grant to get over $50,000, so that, yay! Adina's like, money! To get money so that we can provide every student that has home insecurity a Chromebook and a hotspot, so they can engage in learning seamlessly. So that's a huge one. So thank you, Esther and the team that supported you with that. Okay, so I have selected my superintendent student advisory team, and this is the list of students that I'll be meeting with. I'm gonna meet with the high school students on next Wednesday, or Tuesday, and middle school the following day. I am so excited to get, to have time with these students. They were amazing applicants, really excited and just engage, and really energized me to hear that they're excited to participate in decision-making as a school system. We know students, they receive the education, they're the ones, they're our product, so we have to make sure we really understand how our, everything we're doing impacts the students at that level. So really excited to get input from our students. One of the tasks that I'm gonna charge them with is developing a student bill of rights. So we, as a school system, have some understanding of what are our students' needs, what do they expect from us as a school system. Did also win a shout-out, we selected our parents advisory team and our health and medical expert team that are COVID advisory teams. I'll tell you again, I was looking through their submissions to participate in this. These individuals are just, I was blown away with their qualifications, their, what they do for a living, the decisions that they make. These are some really highly qualified individuals, and I'm honored that they would serve and help support our decisions and what we do as a school system to make sure our students are safe in the classrooms and as well as our teachers. So the format of these is gonna be kind of a roundtable. So I've already got some questions that are coming in from parents. We know we're looking at the possibility of younger students getting vaccinated this June. We know weather's getting colder, so we wanna get some advice and input on how might we modify our lunch when we can't eat outside on a daily basis? We wanna be ready before we have to make a decision, that we've talked about it, we've thought through it, and we've kind of had that input part in a general way, so that we are not caught off-guard if we make a decision and it's not a popular decision. We wanna be ready upfront to get that advice from these experts. The first person on the health and medical team, she's actually not a parent here, Sandra Valenciano, and she's the director for the Decab Board of Health. I felt it was important to have her serve on this team as well, and was thrilled when she said that she would participate and just be that extra expert person in the room. So really excited for these teams. They also start meeting here in the near future, and like I said, there'll be a roundtable discussion. We will be sharing links so people can watch the meeting, kind of like a webinar, and they can hear the conversations for themselves. We'll publish the agenda and any recommendations that come out of these committees. And last thing for COVID updates, I did wanna share some data with us, with everyone, and particularly the board, about where we are with staff vaccination. So we currently have 920 active employees on our roster. We have a process that they have to complete and upload their vaccination information. We still have about fifty, we have only about fifty- We still have about fifty, we have only about 50% have completed the process so far. But based on the data that's complete, the numbers of teachers that are, or staff that are fully vaccinated is really high for those that have completed the form. But we have about half who haven't yet sent it in, which puts our overall vaccination rate for teachers, or for staff, at 48.7%. Of the 462 completers, you can see that nearly most are fully vaccinated or plan on being fully vaccinated by the end of the month. Nine exemptions requests, and we did have five respond that they do not plan to get vaccinated. And we are reaching out and making efforts to understand why those individuals may have, may are, may choose not to get vaccinated, to see what supports we can put in place there. Student vaccination rates, we have just over 2,700 students that are of the age to be eligible for vaccinations. Of that, 14, 36 are fully vaccinated, which puts our student vaccination rate higher than our teachers currently, that we know of, which is close to 53%. So I think that's a really good percentage there. We did start weekly screening, testing this week. And just through the assessments, we've only found two positive students. So I think we're, that's going well and showing us that our, that the rates of COVID are declining. But we still have to be vigilant about wearing our masks and following the mitigation protocols, because what we've seen with Delta is this virus can get out of control very quickly. So it's very important that we maintain a high level of rigorous mitigations in our schools. Those are the rest of my comments. Any questions or comments from the Board?
I'm excited about the partnership with Kennesaw State, particularly the Alternative Teacher Certification Program. I did, I went through an alternative certification program through Metro Risa here in Georgia. And so it is, I think it will be a great opportunity for our staff. And then the student bill rights, I'm also very excited about that. I think it will be a very empowering process for our students.
Thank you.
I'm most excited of all the committees. I think they're all great, and I love that you're getting input from all around. But I'm really excited about the student advisory committee. And I think we should do more to hear directly from our students and incorporate their input and feedback into decisions that we make. I think that's great.
Yeah. Awesome. Thank you so much, Dr. Carmichael. So as you can hear, there's a lot happening, so much happening in our district as well as our schools. And I will say, it is nice to be back in person and to see somewhat more normalcy than we've, than we've seen in this past year. Even seeing kids walking to school and even sitting in traffic. You know, that definitely was something we used to complain about. But now, just to get stuff behind the bus, you know, I'm just grateful to sit behind the bus, you know, and knowing that our kids are going to and from school. Wanted to thank Mr. Chris Billingsley for writing to the Board regarding the DHS JR OTC and for the work that you do with the students. Thank you so much. So the JR OTC prepares students for responsible leadership roles while making them aware of the benefits of citizenship. So thank you, Colonel John Richards, for all that you do as well. She mentioned the Oakhurst Elementary Blue Ribbon, high-performing school. That's major, and that is definitely a reason to celebrate and also thank all of the teachers and staff at Oakhurst for all the hard work that they do. So as many of you know, we have voting coming up on November 2nd. So we will have some new board members, possible change in commission. We also have senior tax exemption and E-SLOSS. So these are just two important initiatives that you will see on the ballot. And so the Senate Bill 292 is what our senior exemption is. So if you have any additional questions or any, want to learn more about that, we have a whole link on our website to it, but you will be seeing that on your ballot. And E-SLOSS, that stands for Educational Special Purpose Local Option Sales Tax. And so this was approved by the voters in 2016, and it will expire June 2022. So it's up for renewal. And essentially what this is, is a 1 cent percent sales tax on all retail purchases. And so, and then that will go to the school districts in the county. So you will see that as well on your ballot. I had the opportunity of meeting with a few stakeholders myself the past couple of weeks. Met with President Lizak over at Agnes Scott. That was a great meeting. It was very nice to meet her. And just talking about ways that we can collaborate more with that campus is such a staple in our city. And so that was a great meeting. Also had the opportunity of meeting with all of our potential new board members. And so that was exciting to just start to set ground and a path with them and create relationships with them. We will look so different in, in just a few months. So that was, that's been on our plate, it's been pretty busy, but it's been good. It's been good stuff. It's been nice to be able to actually sit in front of somebody face-to-face. So many of our meetings were virtual for such a long time. National Principal Month, just wanted to show appreciation to all of our principals again. You went into explanation on how hard they're working and how overwhelmed I'm very sure that they are feeling. And so I definitely want to give them a special shout out for all the hard work that they do and the extra mile that they go. We know that you go the extra mile. We can see that you do more than what is asked of you. And so we appreciate you, not just this month, but every month. And also want to say Happy National Custodian Day. That was on October 2nd. So again, and you saying that they are feeling overwhelmed, they are, they are our, one of our first responders. And the reason why our numbers continue to be low, and one of the reasons why our numbers continue to be low, is because they work so hard to make sure that, that everything stays clean and sanitized. And they're showing the care for their students in that way. With the bus drivers as well, making sure the buses are safe, just, you know, everyone. And so I do, I do feel and I do understand the overwhelming feeling that people are feeling. Us as board members have felt it as well. And we aren't necessarily in this every single day like you are. And so just want to have some recognition for that, understanding that, how this is feeling for you. And if there's anything that we can do as a Board to help ease that, I welcome the conversation to find out ways that we can help ease that, because we want your, we want, we want you to come to work every day with the joy, with the joy of why you even got into this career in the first place. And I know that COVID has a lot to do with that, but if there's anything that we can do to help with that, that's, that's what we're here for. And she did mention also the surveillance testing this week. So I'm glad we're able to start that and just keep up numbers even closer than we've been keeping up with before. And thank you to the nurses and to the Decad Health and Dr. Huddleston for getting, for putting all of that together. My daughter said she got tested today and, you know, she explained to me how unhappy she was with that, because she doesn't like things up her nose. But other than that, I'm glad that we can, you keep track of that for our students. So I think that is all from my Board comment, your comments today. Board members, did you have anything that you'd like to share or questions?
No, I know that there have been many of our students and staff involved in the taking down of the cannon on the square. And so we know that the Decad County Commission has voted to remove that. And so kudos to those students, the community members who have been involved in that effort.
I did want to just also thank the principals and the teachers and the staff for supporting all the extracurricular activities. And I have heard from so many parents how much that has meant to their students to be able to be back in meaningful activities outside of the normal school day, where they've been able to connect with peers that they might not otherwise see during the day, and just how much that has meant to their kids. And it also adds to their excitement about school in general. And so I realize that's a lot of extra effort from our teachers and our staff and our principals. So thanks to them for enabling that to happen and for it to be able to happen safely.
I don't have a comment, the same thing, I just join in all the kudos. But your, your reference to the senior exemption reminded me that, holy smokes, we have a vote. We've done nothing to promote vote on the senior exemption. And we need to, and it's like tomorrow, I mean literally, I think the polls open. Probably voting starts soon. And so I, I just sort of, I don't know what we need to do, but, I mean, in order to pass the exemption the first time around, we had quite a campaign, five for five, vote yes and all the initiatives, which you were a big part of before you were on the Board. But we haven't done that. And I'm wondering what we need to do and what we can do in a short time available. And I know that we have to be careful, because you can't use school funds to promote political activity. But I wonder if we could talk about activating the committee that developed it, maybe some of our candidates who were involved in that, and, and see if we can get done to, to gin something up and make sure that people know. It shouldn't be controversial, but we owe it to ourselves and to our seniors to get the word out.
Yeah, I got a phone call about that today. And I thought we had talked about it a while ago and trying to do PR around that and then other things kind of to priority. Yeah, we do need to maybe circle back with that and see how we can at least get something out and what that can look like. We can all kind of take a piece and run with it.
Okay.
All right, so moving on with the next steps in our agenda. We are with the consent items. We have the personal report, school nutrition, financial report, and the board training plan. Do we have a motion to approve the consent item? Have we to approve the consent item? Okay. In favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Okay, so now we're moving on to our action items for information and discussion.
Yeah, so before I called Dr. Beema to start her presentation, I did share with the Board the monitoring report for, that shares my interpretation of the End Policy 1.2 Academics and Foundations. So any input from the Board on my interpretation and if there needs to be any edits to that information.
Are we going to discuss that?
Yes, that's what, yep. Discussion questions, and I can take notes and...
I have a few comments, and I can either wait or... Okay, so, one of them, I'm sorry, these aren't real well-framed thoughts. On the Policy 1.2 Academics and Foundations, policies, to the extent possible, given an equitable allocation of available resources, all students who graduate have attained their highest academic, intellectual, and personal potential and will be prepared to thrive in life beyond high school. So my first, in one of the comments, one of the comments, I interpret prepared to, I don't even know what the comment is. I guess the, 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 I didn't feel like some of the things that were embedded in the sentence at the bottom that were discussed kind of ad nauseam before we came up with it, captured in the superintendent's interpretation. It's not that I disagree with anything that you put. However, for instance, I interpret prepared to thrive in life beyond high school to mean that all graduating students have met the established criteria for graduation, set forth by the school district. To me, that seemed a little bit circular and flatter, and not really the captain of thought.
Yeah, and why I put that is, for me, for me, as I was reading this, is, you know, trying to measure this idea here is very difficult. So what I, what my thought process here is that if we have set up a school system where our students are meeting criteria that we believe will make them successful, and if we graduate a student, then we are saying, because you're graduating, you've met all the criteria that we put in place, therefore you are ready to thrive in your next step.
I feel like that begs the question, what those criteria are.
Yep.
And this is supposed to be sort of a statement of principle that says, we need to find some criteria. But just to say that you met whatever criteria we set, that's quite good. And I know that in prepared to thrive in life beyond high school, I mean, the discussion behind that was, we need to make sure that we're preparing kids to live a good and full life. And that might mean going to college, it might be going to art school, it might be going to trade school, it might be doing none of those things, but doing something else. But they need to have the tools, both character-wise and skills and knowledge. They're going to be prepared to live their best life. And I know that it's all flowery, but that was kind of the point. But somehow or another, I don't think they're saying that they've met whatever requirements we set. I don't think that gets it.
All right. Any suggestions on what, or things that should be added to that?
I mean, I don't have a proposal, how to fix it right now.
So would we, or are you suggesting to you that we would put some of those, some of those steps in that, in her interpretation section?
Specific criteria?
Right, yeah, like specific criteria of what that looks like to, to be prepared beyond high school?
Well, my suggestion would be yes, that there'd be some text. And number one, I don't think it's essential that we always talk in terms of measurable goals. Very important to come up with measurable criteria. But we can also agree that there's some concepts that are a little bit hard to measure. And I think that the goal is a mix of both. And so I think that you can say, I interpret this to mean things that we can't immediately measure. And then you can say, that's hard to measure, and here's how we're going to get it. We've got a criteria to leave that. But we can at least acknowledge the goal, which is this larger goal of preparing kids to function well in life.
Mind if I piggyback on that for a second?
Of course not.
Because I'm trying to dig into this and understand where you're coming from. And I do remember some of these conversations, because when we were creating this policy, you talked about this at length. And this is making me think of some of the conversations we had about students when they graduate to be, have a plan to do something. And like Louis said, not all kids are going to go to, you know, a four-year college or a two-year college, or some might go into the military, some might start a trade. But we want them to do something. We want them to have a plan. And so maybe we can find some criteria to determine whether we have enabled students to have a plan and whether or not they execute that plan. And that includes graduating, but not just graduating, like actually taking that next step and engaging in what life will bring to them. Does that, does that hit on some of what you're saying?
Okay.
Related.
Gotcha.
Okay. Do you know if we have anything like that in the high school right now? Almost like an exit survey or interview that lets us know what our kids are planning on doing after graduation?
Not that I'm aware of for general education students. The students that have IEP, they do a, if they have special needs, they do a transition plan. So they actually start working on that in eighth grade, their transition plan. They write their goals, what their career goals are, what their next steps are, whatever training they might need. They start working on that really early. Now, for our high school students, the non-IEP students, I'm not aware of anything.
I think, I think like, I know the counselors have such in starting junior year.
Oh, I just got a text from Principal Lott, and she says they do a survey, an exit survey with all seniors. Yeah, there we go. Thanks, Michelle.
That might be something that's actually realistic and a good way to measure them. Like what, what are we, what are our students doing?
Honestly, it could lead to some of these stuff, and we've discussed a little bit, that in my opinion, counseling needs. And if we set an appropriate goal, it could lead to additional, you know, resources or programming around counseling, make sure the counselor's available to make sure these kids have a path. A related thing, if I may, it's just the other, I think it's the same bullet. And again, it's not that I disagree with anything in the bullet. It's the thoughts that have been part of the discussion. And we spend all this time thinking about, you know, attain their highest academic, intellectual, and personal potential. And, you know, if I recall, sort of it started as just, you know, we want high achievement. Good school boards are supposed to push high achievement. So we're very interested in high achievement. So, well, what does that mean? So that's distinct type achievement. But additionally, there's a, when I first ran for the school board a long time ago, part of what motivated me is that at the time, our metrics and the way we measured stuff was how many of the kids, what percentage are competent? And we celebrate the 75... And we, we celebrate that seventy-five percent met the base level of competence on subjects or another. It was a long time ago. But, um, and I, I didn't like that because it seemed like we needed to reach higher. I mean, we need to have a certain, they're going to achieve kind of the minimum level. And then we need to make sure that the kids who can achieve more than that are also achieving the highest level of their potential. And so, um, we do a lot better job with that, have for a long time. So that now we kind of look at people and we're making sure that they meet their growth targets across the spectrum. So it's not just about minimum level and it's not just about how many gifted kids you have or whatever. Things should be everybody, all up and down, are giving everything that they need. That, that's a concept that's really important to me, that we're serving the whole spectrum, we're serving every kid.
Yeah.
Personally, I would kind of like to see called out.
Absolutely.
It's not that it's not there.
Yeah, no, no, that's, this is why we have these conversations.
Some of that same thought is over on that table, like, and on page four. Part of the evidence is that, um, do kids think and solve problems with both creative and critical skills?
Yep.
And the data is what percentage of students are scoring in the highest range.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm not sure if that captures all that we need to be capturing.
Okay.
Not every kid's capable of scoring in the highest range. What we need to make sure is that those are capable of scoring in the middle range or scoring in the, in the lower range, right? We need to make sure that everybody's getting...
Right, right. So in this one was really about those, you know, when you look at how the eight, these exams are broken down and when they talk about, and you'll see more about the levels of achievement level descriptors, but really, if students are doing the, you know, the highest range, um, exceeding range, they're really digging into that deep critical thinking component. So if we're having more students in that component, in that range, then those students are thinking critically, um, are using those problem solving skills. But part of, just the way those tests are designed, um, helps you ascertain, are our students moving to that highest level of critical thinking and problem solving? So that's why I selected those ones, um, and really kind of teasing out, not just proficient, but are they moving into that highest range of achievement where the test is capable of measuring those higher levels of critical thinking and problem solving?
And that honestly sounds appropriate to me. I, I would have a related question, though, that a lot of the scoring, like if I look at, um, understand the history of the world, the statistics, IB exam scores, A push scores,
Mm-hmm.
and IB personal project.
Yep.
And that leaves me wondering, what about the kids who aren't IB?
Well, MIP is for everyone.
Okay.
Yeah.
So this, this covers everything?
Yes. The MIP, yeah, the MIP, all students complete the end middle years program.
Okay.
And they all do a, a big culminating personal project.
Those are good.
I have one that I've got, um, on the page, I think it's page sixty of your packet, page five of this manual. The demonstrates an understanding of respect for human and intercultural differences in multiple perspectives. I really feel like that belongs more in our character end section.
Well, I would not have, isn't there a learning, like a knowledge component of that as well as a character component?
Tell me more about why you think that.
Well, demonstrates an understanding of and respect for intercultural differences in multiple perspectives. Part of that, I would think, is the curriculum that is designed through, which we do a great job of, of making sure that kids have learned about other cultures
Mm-hmm, yep.
and have, have learned about their cultural differences.
Mm-hmm.
And through doing that, have, you know, developed multicultural perspectives. But it seems to me that there's, there's clearly an academic component that should be called out as an academic component. We also have a character goal, which is the knowledge, which is the holding character.
So for this one, is the board feeling like it's, it's, this is really trying to lean more into the content we're teaching the students will lend it to creating students. That the end product is that they have that opportunity to understand different, um, and respect humans and under intercultural differences?
I think so, because I'm thinking of humanities anymore, but I can't remember.
INS or individuals and societies?
Yeah, yeah. I could see how matters achieve, you know, through at least that, that class.
Okay, gotcha, that makes sense, all right, that helps. Okay, anyone, any, anything else?
I have just a general comment.
Uh-huh.
Um, and this because we're talking here about highest academic potential, but also intellectual and personal potential. And generally, I feel like the data that we were presenting was very quantitative.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Very much grades and scores and that kind of thing. But I would like to explore also some qualitative data around particularly the intellectual and personal potential. And that may mean, um, are our students exploring other things? Like, are they participating in the arts? Are they participating in sports? Are they participating in some enriching activities? Are they, um, or even within a class? I think you mentioned that some have culminating presentations that we, you know, give our students an opportunity to not, to take their learning. And how do we enable them to, um, apply that to the real world and then grow intellectually and personally from that? So I'd like to explore adding some qualitative data, information, like supporting to that, because I don't think it's all about just grade your test scores. I think there's a lot more to this and how we want our students to grow from these other aspects.
Yeah, I agree in that, and that is actually one of the key components of our building a data culture is understanding, it's not just the numbers. It is some of those qualitative data pieces that we need to make sure we're looking at and understanding and unpacking.
On that subject, um, one of the things that we've talked about, you and I, in our conversation the other day, was the emphasis that I would put on, when we talk about personal potential, building leadership qualities in children and, and the students that they... And to me, I've always thought the extracurriculars should have a very heavy focus on valuing those opportunities for kids to be leaders. And I feel like if that's called out in a goal, then we can, as far as the evaluation, we can make sure that the people leading those programs are maximizing that opportunity. It's not always done, but it could be.
Yeah.
I don't know if it fits here, I know there's another policy about building character.
Yes.
And, and it might belong there.
Okay.
And from an equity perspective, if we look at that, I would like also, like, it goes back to a conversation we had maybe a, a meeting or two ago about wanting to see that we have participation across all groups and that we're really encouraging all students to participate and not just, um, assuming that they will sign up on their own. You know, sometimes we may need to really make sure we're kind of taking a holistic look at, at ensuring that we are really providing this opportunity to all our students and that's being taken advantage of and that all our students are having an opportunity to grow from it.
Okay. Can you?
Um, I just wanted to ask, a good clarification in terms of the qualitative data and, and what that was looking for, because it, it still sounds kind of quantitative to me of how many kids are participating in sports, how many students. I'm just wondering, what, what specific information was provided extracurriculars? Because it seems like it was still just turning into numbers in terms of how many kids are participating in these different, um, opportunities that we offer through extracurricular activities.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a good question. Um, maybe it's about what we are offering, ensuring that we are, you know, and I know that we are doing a lot of this already. You know, I know that there are a hundred different clubs at the high school, literally. And that we are offering, um, music in school, you know, band, chorus, orchestra, and then numerous opportunities for kids to participate out of school. We are encouraging our high school students to participate in community service, which is with, gives and also growth opportunity. And that's, we're giving value to that, you know, our, our seniors who do, I think it's sixty hours, get to wear a cord at graduation. So I think it's looking, looking at our programming, and so not just counting numbers. I think it's important to, to see who's participating, but also, uh, look at what we're offering. And are we offering opportunities in these various areas to develop, um, these intellectual and personal potentials of these kids in order for them to, you know, even have the opportunity? So maybe that's part of it, is looking at our offerings and seeing if there's maybe something we, we need to add to that or...
Some of the metrics that we had talked about, and I don't remember if we ever landed on any of them, but some that have been thrown around were things like, every kid should have something to enter into. And so what percentage of our kids, in white and black, have found something? And do we have something for everybody? So whether it's football, band, or debate, um, there's something that... Another one that I know that some, like West Point, I think uses, it's important, not just that people participate, but they grow in their participation. It's not something where they just show up. And so, how many kids have something to participate in year after year and increase their involvement in? And that's a measure that West Point looks at and says, this kid's going to be, stick to something and be committed to it and grow in it, and that's the trait that we want to increase.
Yeah.
So how many of the kids do we have, uh, have that, or how many have multiple year participation? That kind of thing. I mean, that's, that's, but those are the kinds of things that we talked about at one time.
Okay. Um, I was, what was I going to say? Oh, I think you're definitely going in the right direction, Dr. Furman, as well with, when you start meeting with the students. Because I think hearing from them and making sure that what is being offered is still what kids want to do. Uh, I think sometimes as adults, we think about the things we did when we went to high school. It's like, of course they're going to want to do that. And, um, with technology and everything the way that it is, um, you know, it's kind of hard to keep up with it, but they do keep up with it.
Yeah.
So I am curious to see if there's, if there's something that we're missing there and more that we can, um, implement for them in that, in that regard. Um, and then going back to, I found very interesting when you were talking about the IEP pipeline.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and the path, I guess not the pipeline, but the IEP path.
Yeah.
And then having the experience with my daughter in IB, there was something very similar.
Mm, mhm.
And so I'm wondering if there's a way we can really talk about those kids that we always talk about in the middle.
Yeah.
Um, that some kind of program is also directed toward them. And we already have the, the metrics for it.
Mm-hmm.
It just goes, it's already labeled.
Yeah.
It's labeled for IEP or it's labeled for IB.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but the outcome sounds incredible, just starting, starting to focus on the students and their goals in eighth grade, you know, all the way through.
Yep.
Um, and, and so that could then lend to what Louis was saying. Now, what, what, what can we find in eighth grade that they would love to do or that they're passionate about, or that they're interested in, or that they're good at? And then being able to foster that all the way through high school.
Mm-hmm.
So that would probably be that area too, and we could just really explore what that would look like. All right, do we have any more questions for Dr. Furman in this area?
Um, I think this is a really good start and a great conversation. And I think that this is why we need to revisit these, once we get these done, we revisit these annually. Because I think we'll continue to evolve our expectations and our, our thinking on this. Like, part of this is about emerging technologies and, and seeing whether our students are prepared, um, you know, and are technologically literate. That simply, even that will require us to revisit this every year because, uh, you know, the job market changes and the technology changes and the careers change. And so we also need to make sure that we are evolving as a school system and, and preparing our students for the future.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then some other basic things that we probably do, but it'd be nice to really call it out and, and check to see, because there are certain life skills. And if we're saying that we want our students to thrive in life beyond high school, there's some really important things about just money management and just basic life skills that we, we may want to look and just see what courses we offer that cover those kinds of things, just so that our kids will thrive. Um, so I think it's going to be an evolving, I don't think we'll get it, I don't think we'll get this one a hundred percent the first time.
No, and, yeah, yeah.
I think we're, we have a good start. Um, and I think this conversation, you know, this could be a work session at some point, if we're talking about this policy.
No, this definitely was my first stab at it to kind of see where I was landing and get your input as a board on where you were interpreting these, so that we can move forward and take the next step.
It's in the right direction.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll take this back to the drawing board and bring it back at another board meeting. Okay, so now I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Bean and her amazing team. And they are going to present a deeper dive into some data as well as, um, the work that her team is leading when it comes to accelerating student learning pillar and addressing the ends that are, um, kind of it's the way to address the ends that are outlined. Thank you, Dr. Bean.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, good to see you all again. Madam Chairperson, members of the board, Dr. Furman, on behalf of the Department of Teaching and Learning, thank you for letting us share. Amy, Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning. And I'm here with my amazing team, and they are amazing, as you will see. Um, we have Dr. Professor Given, Director of Instructional Programs. Courtney Simon, who you may not have met, she is new to us this year, and she is wonderful. We are so happy she is here. She's our Director of English Language Arts and Social Studies. And we have Heidi Watley, Director of Research and Analytics, and Julie Nussbaum, Director of Math and Science. So as a result of tonight's presentation, you will understand the purpose and structure of our CSD instructional framework. You'll be able to name our instructional outcomes that we plan to achieve by 2026 and the action steps that we will take to achieve them. So our instructional framework, oh, I got it flipped, sorry. Our instructional framework defines our core practices in regards to instruction. It shows what we expect to see in every classroom from first to grade twelve across the district. We start with our inquiry based instructional programs. We move to our high leverage practices that we have identified to be most impactful. Our core practices for equity, including critical literacy and numeracy, culturally responsive teaching, and strong formative assessment practices that allow students to become leaders of their own learning through goal setting, feedback, and feedback, so that students know where they are, know where they're going, and how they're going to get there. So then we move to the important part of the framework, our core, is what we do, is our standards, our teachers, and of course, our students. And through our mission, oh, oh, dang.
I could never get that thing to work.
Through our mission, vision, core beliefs, strategic priorities, our theory of action, city schools and educator design the expectations for teaching and learning, we provide meaningful, motivating, rewarding, rigorous, relevant, effective learning experiences for our students. Our department exists to make those promises a reality for each student in every classroom. We are charged with ensuring, uh, we are charged with ensuring that we meet the board's end policies. We are responsible for the twelve indicators that you were just discussing under academics and foundations. We also work to ensure equity to the end, um, to end the practices that have created the disproportionate outcomes and work to implement our IB program with fidelity, so that our students embody the characteristics of the learner profile, including being principal, sharing reflective papers. In order to achieve these lofty goals that we have set forth, we have created the Framework for Equitable Outcomes. And specifically, our department is leading the work and it's the pillar, um, the center pillar, accelerating student learning. Which we are here to unpack for you tonight. We have set three aspirational goals that we intend to meet in the next five years. First, all students will meet or exceed predicted growth scores. Next, city schools and educator will eliminate disproportionate outcomes based on race. And finally, we will work to ensure that all students exemplify the CSD graduate profile. First, uh, let's look at how we develop the plan. Our decisions are always data informed and research based. So Heidi Watley, Director of Research and Analytics, will lead us through the current data that informs our work. Thank you, Christy. Good evening. I'm going to give you some highlightable...
I'm going to give you some high-level data on our, on some of our assessment tools. I'll highlight some of our points of pride and some of our opportunities for growth as we look at the data. So we continue to lead the state in the Metro Risa in our performance on the GMAT test. Here you see the third grade reading performance. There's a link on the slide. If you click it in your presentation, you can see all the ELA math and then the reading Excel performance. The pattern is the same for all of this panel media data. Much higher than the Risa, much higher than the state. This next graph is a summary of our end-of-grade tests in ELA, math, science, and social studies. This graph represents the percentage of students proficient and distinguished for grades three through eight. It's aggregated by grade, but disaggregated by subgroup. So what you're looking at is the content areas across the subgroups in 19, 19, 2019 and 2021. So you'll see the black subgroup in both years and then the white subgroup in both years and then all students in both years. The blue is English Language Arts, the yellow is math, the green is science, the red is social studies. The percentages of all students scoring proficient and distinguished in language arts and math was similar to performance in 2019. There were 10% less students scoring distinguished and proficient in science, that green bar over on the all students, and 5% less scoring proficient in social studies, the red bar. You can see that the subgroups performed differently, with the black students increasing in 2021 in social studies and the white students decreasing in social studies. And you can also see here that we still have a lot of opportunity for growth in terms of working on our, paying our educational debt. This, this next slide is our end-of-course test. And so there, the number of tests was reduced, so there were only four tests that we gave in both years. In 2021, we had extremely low participation. We only gave 218 tests while in 2021, we administered 1506. I mean, in 2019, we administered 1506. So in some of our areas, you'll see the bars are missing because we had less than 10 students take that test. And that happened in U.S. History. You can see that we have a number for all students, but do not have a number, we do not have more than 10 in either of our subgroups there. So we exclude that because then we can start identifying students. The results were that 10, 10% fewer students were proficient or distinguished in American Literature. The same percentage were proficient and distinguished in Algebra. From the students who took the test, the white students performed more similarly to the white students in Algebra. This, this next slide is our math data from spring 2019 and fall 2021, this test we just took. We typically do not compare fall to spring, Dana, in this manner, but we wanted to show you the last full of math administration where everybody took it and then the most recent one where everybody took it. So we're looking at percentile data here, not the rate or the, or the growth, because we wanted to, the percentiles tend to remain similar across administrations. So you can see here that the dashed lines represent 2021 and the solid lines represent 2019. So for grades six through 10, the differences were not dramatic. But across all the subgroups, we did see lower performance in second grade in reading and higher performance in fourth and fifth grade in 2021. So that's a little bit interesting, this data. This next graph is the same, same data, but for math. And as you can see by looking at the dashed lines, they are lower than the solid lines across the board. And the gray, in this graph, the gray levels are go across the bottom, so each line is a gray level. So you can see that that's consistent across grade levels and across subgroups there for having better performance in math. And last and finally, this is our point of pride, our SAT scores. The overall SAT score increases from 1170 to 1227. Our black students increased their, their total score by 85 points. So if you look at the, the blue and the yellow together makes that total score, but they increased over 40 points in both areas, in English, evidence-based reading and writing, as well as mathematics. And just a note, when you look back over the years of data, the pattern that you see for 2019, 20, for each population is about the same. So like, the white student average scores are around 1,200 and the black students average scores were around 900,000 for many, many years. So this is the first year that we've kind of seen a boost in that black subgroup, which is really nice to see. The next you will hear from Dr. Julie McFadden, our Director of Mathematics and Science, and she will share about our priority initiatives. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Aria, and good evening. It's nice to see all of you. Based on our goals, the instructional framework that you heard about from Dr. Bean, our data that Heidi just shared with us, our department has developed five priority initiatives that will guide our work over the next five years. Each of these priority initiatives are broad goals that take purposeful planning and follow-up to ensure we're making progress. So in order to help us evaluate that progress, we've identified benchmarks towards each broad goal that we will work to meet each academic school year. Now, we're excited to share with you our progress towards these broad goals by highlighting some specific examples of the benchmarks for this academic school year. I'm going to begin with Priority Initiative One, which is creating and implementing a tiered, co-competitive curriculum map. This initiative is closely aligned to our focus on equity. And when we say tiered curriculum map, we're referring to the varying levels of support provided to students. All students receive tier one support. This is that basic level of differentiation that happens in every single classroom. Some students need more intensive academic or behavior support and may show a need for tier two or tier three interventions and support. The first initiative states that our curriculum map should include materials, practices, standards for every level of support. Permittance has two definitions, the quality of being logical and consistent, and the quality of forming a unified whole. And we have both of those definitions in mind when we think about coherence in our curriculum map. First benchmark that I'm going to highlight tonight states that we will work to align resources, assessments, standards, and practices to accelerate student learning. And this year, we're working to ensure that the resources and assessments our teachers are using are closely aligned to standards as well as high-leverage practices that support student learning. One example of that is the work to roll out Georgia Numeracy Project in City Schools of Decatur. Georgia Numeracy Project was developed by the Georgia DOE based on work from the New Zealand Numeracy Project. It's an evidence-based program that supports teachers with identifying students' number strategies and number knowledge and using that information and supporting our students with developing strong number sense. Last school year, during the pandemic, we worked to train all of our K-5 early intervention program teachers, these are the teachers at elementary level that provide those tier two and tier three supports, across all seven of our K-5 schools. This year, our EIP teachers are implementing Georgia Numeracy with students receiving tier two and tier three support. This year, we're also working to train all of our tier one teachers on using Georgia Numeracy in the tier one classroom so that all students have that strong foundation, teachers understand the number sense and number knowledge, and are able to help support that number development in elementary school. I've had the opportunity to be invited to a number of EIP teacher team meetings this year to look at data from their initial implementation and have targeted discussions about students' mathematical needs and some best steps. One teacher shared during a collaborative planning session, this not only gives me insight into what the students know, it also gives me the way forward. Oftentimes, our assessments will identify gaps, but may not offer ways to move forward with students. I cannot highlight this rollout without mentioning the name of Stacy Foster. She's one of our amazing EIP teachers at Claremont Elementary, who's been using Georgia Numeracy for a number of years with her own students. She has decided and graciously agreed to step up as a teacher leader to provide input and insight and just her shared experience with teachers about how it works with her own children, her own children in her classroom. So I just wanted to make sure that I called out for valuable participation in this. I'm so excited to continue working with our elementary math teachers to ensure that we're aligning our resources, assessments, and practices to accelerate student learning indicator. The second piece that I want to highlight, the second benchmark, states that we're going to identify priority standards and map those standards vertically and horizontally. The COVID pandemic has had immeasurable impact on education as a whole and city schools of Decatur. Called it a question, everything about the way that schools have functioned historically, but it's also offered an opportunity for change. One of the positive outcomes of last school year was collaboration not only between teachers on the same grade level at a single school, but collaboration across schools. Commentary guides have not always been the practice at our elementary schools across the schools. We have one middle school and one high school, and so that collaboration has historically happened at our secondary schools. Historically, our elementary schools have really built their own internal pacing guides and their own internal assessments that they're using. Last year, we lifted this work to the district level so that we could offer parent-facing communication guides so that parents were aware what second graders would be learning, what third graders would be learning. This year, we've decided to continue that work with the support of our K-5 ELA and math teacher leaders. These are teachers who have volunteered to step up for a site-induced position that come together before every six weeks and collaborate to provide high-quality resources, collaborate on common assessments, so that we're ensuring that our second graders are being measured and being assessed in similar ways across the district. These teacher leaders are just amazing and represent every, every one of our seven, eight-five schools in the district, and we have a few goals for them. The first is to facilitate collaboration across all of the K-5 schools to develop those commentation guides and assessments. The second is to build and support collective efficacy across the district. The third is to develop teacher leadership within our district, and the last is to ensure equitable outcomes for all students and city schools of Decatur through highly rigorous and standards-aligned tests and assessments. Next, you're going to hear from Courtney Simon, our Director of ELA and Social Studies.
Thank you. Good evening, board and Dr. Furman. I am going to talk about Priority Initiative Two. Priority Initiative Two addresses the utilization of consistent, standards-aligned core materials in all classrooms. We have a curriculum evaluation cycle in CSD. We are currently in the implementation phase for K through five, English Language Arts, and the collect and the collect and study phase for grades six through 12. This evening, I want to share with you the work we are doing in K through five. In Benchmark A, we are committed to foundations, a structured founding program in grades K through three, and adopted the American Reading Company Core Literacy Program in K five. In addition, we have provided the opportunity for our teachers to receive Orkin Gillingham training. We are so excited to share that over 20 teachers chose to use some of their summer vacations to attend a full-day, two-week training program. Currently, we have 20 additional teachers engaged in the same program on Saturdays, and we have six staff members working to become certified OGE educators. We also have a group of teachers and leaders engaged in a deep dive into literacy instruction through a two-year professional development called LETS, which means Language Essential for Teachers of Reading and Spelling. This speaks to the level of dedication of our staff and their belief around the importance of structured literacy education. We have just initiated our second cohort for paraprofessional literacy training because we know what a valuable resource we have in our paraprofessionals here at the city schools of Decatur. Next, you will hear from Dr. Bean concerning our progress with Priority Initiative Three. Thank you.
Thank you.
Priority Initiative Three really deals with building that data culture here in CSD. We're developing and implementing a simplified, comprehensive, and consistent approach to assessments that will allow us to access and utilize data to inform our decisions in regards to programming and instructional needs. I'd like to highlight a couple of those benchmarks as well. First is universal screening. Universal screening means that we administer high-quality assessments to all students to determine intervention and enrichment needs. Our multi-tiered system of support gives all students access to a great education in the most inclusive environment possible. This access is provided using universal screening and progress monitoring data. Starts our students in the least supportive environment and then adding or removing support as needed. In other words, we're giving each and every student just the right amount of support that they need to succeed. Research has consistently shown that universal screening improves the representation of underrepresented, or historically underrepresented students and gets it in talented programs by relying on an objective test rather than more subjective referrals from parent or teacher. This year, we welcomed Erica Dackery to our department. She is our district intervention specialist and NCFS coordinator. She's doing an excellent job, not only on monitoring the daily intervention programs that are happening in our classrooms each and every day, but she's also already implemented several of the programs that we discussed last year, last spring, in city schools of Decatur to provide our students with maximum opportunities for success. Decatur High School has held Saturday help sessions for several years now, and the K, and in grade K eight, we just completed our first session this past Saturday. The middle school students followed the credit recovery model just like Decatur High School did, whereas K through five students engaged in hands-on math and literacy enrichment activities to support grade level standards. We also completed our first K-12 academic interception program during fall break. Teachers delivered direct instruction to small groups of students in mathematics and literacy with a spaced-themed lesson, with lessons. This intervention was designed to support students that met certain criteria with math and the Math Test. A total of 398 students were invited to participate. Of those 81 students registered and attended, six out of the nine teachers saw an increase in performance in both ELA and math, and the high school, middle, I'm sorry, and high school students were able to provide, be provided time and attention to complete Apex Course Recovery. Since its school day tutoring will begin October 19th, we're excited to report that we will have service at all schools K through 12. Building coordinators are working to identify students who meet the criteria and recruit tutors to serve for 90 minutes Tuesday through Thursday. This summer, we will again provide students K through 12 opportunities to help them prepare for the upcoming school year in K eight and with credit recovery in nine through 12. This past summer, we served over 500 CSD students in our summer program. This past summer, we served over 500 CSE students in our summer program. Okay, next we'll talk about Priority Initiative Number Four, and you heard a bit about this from Dr. Banks last week. We partner across departmental leagues to foster inclusive environments where every student and staff member fills up with self-belonging in city schools of Decatur. Research shows that when curricula includes stories, history, characters from various backgrounds portrayed in positive manners, then students thrive. That's why the culturally responsive scorecards are tools that we use as part of our curriculum review process. The culturally responsive scorecards are designed by NYU at the Metro Center to help us determine the extent to which our curricula are or are not culturally responsive. The Department of City Equity and Student Services and Teaching and Learning are presently partnering to initiate an equity audit in all CSE curricula, a curriculum that misrepresents history and does not introduce opportunities for students to engage positively in their learning, a disservice to students. The consequences of such curriculums can be disengagement, a lack of connection, identity issues, and low self-esteem. Initiating and collaborating with the Equity and Education Task Force, which is a group of community stakeholders, they will help us eliminate such practices by supporting schools to design and establish anti-racism and social justice expeditions and units of inquiry at K-5, and participate in collaborative process to evaluate the process of and make recommendations for equitable and representative curriculum across you. Now, we will hear from Ms. Pissingett into our Director of Instructional Programs, and she'll share some highlights from Priority Initiative Number Five. There you are. Good evening, and we have made it to our final Priority Initiative for our department, which is focused on evaluating and ensuring equitable programs, policies, and practices. And you're already familiar with some of these benchmarks from Dr. Bean's previous presentation at the board work section, which he shared about Spanish program evaluation and all of these other items. We're going to be highlighting our first benchmark under this initiative tonight, which is forming our Equity and Grading Task Force. This year, we are embarking on an analysis of our current grading and grade reporting systems and practices. By the end of this year, we are really hoping to have recommendations for a common K-12 grading scale with clear, easy-to-understand descriptors, recommendations for a common K-12 grade book tool as well, which would be open in real time to students and parents, and also recommendations for development of written district-wide policies, practices, and procedures for grading. We have a great deal of evidence showing a need for this work to be done at this time. We currently use a variety of grading scales across our grade bands. We also utilize different grading platforms with different report outputs across grade bands. We've had parents report to us that they're not sure what is reported where. It also makes it very difficult for us to pull grades easily for all students for monitoring purposes and to summarize achievement and performance. We have noted that grades for students of color, on average, are lower than grades of white students at every grade band. Of course, that's not every student in every class, but on average, we do see that. We also have parents and students having expressed difficulty and frustration with the present grading system. We have heard in our department, as well as in the Equity Department, some parents feeling unclear on what different grades mean despite school's efforts and best intentions to explain. We have had parents say that they feel they do not really understand how a student is doing at a given point in time, but they feel there's room for subjectivity and bias in some of our current grading practices and procedures. And we've identified discrepancies between assigned grades and student performance on standardized assessments. Finally, a recent accreditation report identified effectiveness of grading practices and communication of grades as a growth area for our district, and they did suggest that we improve the way that we grade and communicate grades in a way that makes sense to students and parents. We will be using Grading for Equity by Joe Feldman to ground and guide our work. We're not going to be using it as a description, but rather a guide for reflection and discussion. All of our task force teachers, instructional coaches, and principals will be receiving a copy. Also, I recommend if you are interested in the book, you go online. It has a website. The first chapter is available to anyone. And that also brings me to who is involved in this work. We just created an Equity and Grading Teacher Task Force to give teachers a vehicle to participate and keep them at the center of this work. Intentional efforts were made to create a balanced and diverse team that represents a variety of grade levels, programs, subjects, and demographics. I'm not announcing that team tonight because we're still waiting for confirmation from team members that they are on board. There was an application process, a selection committee. Additionally, principals and instructional coaches will be providing feedback and participating throughout the year through their already scheduled monthly meetings. Parents and students will provide feedback as well through the SBLT and the Superintendent's New Student Advisory Committee. And finally, a cross-department committee of Wilson administrators meets regularly to discuss the process and progress of this work, and we look forward to sharing with you all the progress and eventual recommendations. With that, I'm going to turn it back over to Dr. Bean to close us out. So, Erica, I have an incredible team I get to come to work with every day, so that makes it a wonderful place to be. In his book, How to Be an Anti-Racist, Ibram Kendi says that Americans have long been trained to see the deficiencies in people rather than policy. I am grateful to come to work each day to work alongside educators that recognize that our students are not deficient. They're extraordinary, and it is our job to examine the policies, practices, and break down any barriers that are preventing our students from excelling in our classes. I'm completely confident that with your support that we can achieve these outcomes that our students deserve.
Thank you. Reach out to Dr. Bean and her team. Any comments or questions from the board for Dr. Bean and any of the members of her team?
One question. What would the Common Grading Tool mean for the IB rubrics that are currently used? Are we coming up with common IB rubrics? Or I can't imagine that this Common Grading Tool would do away with the IB rubrics. What will that mean?
Right. So we've been having conversations with our IB Regional Director and Aunt Casey, who's in IB support here, and just what are best practices with IB? And so we are digging into that. That will be part of that. So really, the answer to that question will come out of the findings of the team or the recommendations of the team. IB says that we need to report the results of our rubrics at least twice a year to IB, but they do not make any kind of, you know, there's no requirement as to what grading the summer scale or anything else that we use as IB.
And then, Dr. Gibb has commented about students of color typically score lower in grading, and I just wanted to see if we could clarify what, who students of color are. Is it predominantly black students? Or is it Latinx students, including all of those?
I pulled that data for Kristen to look at, and we were looking at black versus white.
Okay.
Particularly.
I want to thank you. I thought it was a great presentation. I thought all around, and I really appreciate it. Very clear. I counted very few acronyms, which meant that I understood the whole thing. But I really appreciated it. I thought it was a terrific survey, a terrific overview of all that you're on. You give me a great deal of confidence that we got it under control. So, thank you for that. I was going to comment on the IB. I'm so glad that you can look at the grading. I think that the IB grading framework is kind of nifty, like I can understand it intellectually, but not when I get a grade report. And so, you know, when you get a grade report, it's like, wow. There's too much information. I don't know what to do with it. So, I think it's really something, I mean, I want to protect IB. I love IB. That report card is just a name. I had a question. I mean, I noticed a sharp drop from 2019 to 21, which I assume we attribute to COVID. I mean, you're going pre-COVID. Is there anything else that you need to take from that or we should?
I mean, you know, there's a lot of different factors that could go into that. I think predominantly COVID probably explains a lot of them. But I think we look at that data and then the initiatives sort of build on that. So all of the stuff that Dr. McPadden talked about is needed. Would much of it still be needed if we didn't have this year gap? We don't know. But I think, like, it is what it is, and so we can't look at it and say why, but we can just sort of get.
I think that it is discrepancies that we see are in high school, and the reasons for that are the dramatic number difference in the number of students that took the test. Not so dramatic.
And this is just a comment that I wanted to make. It might be a question. I'm not sure. But one of the things I noted as we look at this, and one of the goals is that we're going to close the gap. I know that if I fully learned it, I could recite it. Because I was supposed to have to repeat the free learning objectives.
You were. Yeah, we had a self-assessment, and I took it out.
But one of the things we used to talk about is that when we talk about closing the gap, Heidi made a comment at one point that the black students have increased and the white students have actually decreased in social studies studies. I don't remember which one it was. You know, that's just some kind of a blip in the data. One of the things that we used to talk about, and this came from Ron Ferguson, I don't remember exactly which book. But it was that when you talk about closing the gap, that when we set the goal to close the gap, that's not really what we're trying to do. It's equity with excellence, not just equity, right?
Right.
And so, the specific way that he had recommended setting goals around closing the gap is that instead of measuring the gap, instead what we need to do is figure out the baseline for white and black and then set growth targets for the white students and faster growth targets for the black students. And so, the end result is that you close the gap and you set those growth targets in a way that you can do that. But at the same time, you're making sure that it's, you're closing the gap with both groups of students increasing. And I don't think that we've been doing that, but I've always thought that we should be. And I want to just suggest that.
Yeah, so our first goal is that all students will meet their growth, meet or exceed their growth targets, which we are given each year. So yes, if a student is, you know, wherever a student's performing, they should show a year of growth in a year. So, that's especially important for our gifted students and our high-achieving students, who typically do not show a year of growth because they're already beyond the standard. With the disproportionate outcomes, I think our SAT data is a great example of that. What you saw is that we saw an increase in the scores, the overall scores of the black students, and that brought up the entire district. So yes, our goal is that we bring our black students' achievement up to.
I don't think that is an example of what I'm talking about. Because the example that I would have would be that we would actually have growth on the white students and fast growth on the black students. But we have these flat scores on the white students and nice growth of black students. I am not suggesting this problem. I think all the data shows that we're doing great. So this is not a comment about anything that's going on. It's about how you set targets and goals. And so, the suggestion would be that we have a, the individualized, every student. I noted that. I think that's kind of the first point that I was talking about.
Oh, yeah.
But it would also be that when you're talking about specifically the disparity, specifically the subgroups, that you would in fact have targets for both groups that are going to the gap. So I'll leave it at that.
I have a question because I remember that we were a part of the dyslexia pilot.
Yes.
We started that last school year. And I was just curious, is some of this OG training and are some of these things a part of that pilot?
It absolutely is, and in fact, one of the things I was going to ask Dr. Freeman soon is if we could do another presentation for you because I love talking to people. We could do another presentation on that. We are actually quite significantly ahead of our targets on where we should be with the dyslexia pilot. We actually achieved last year what was required by the state of Georgia through House Bill 48 this year. And yes, in addition to the requirements, being a part of the cohort for identifying students with characteristics of dyslexia, we're going beyond that with our foundation Tier One Instruction, a structured founding program for all students in K-3. And yes, the push, not push, because, I mean, these teachers volunteer. Like, this was not stipended. They spent two weeks this summer, and they're spending their Saturdays doing this because they believe this strongly and how good this is for our kids. And yes, so that OG training, which is great for all kids, also is incredibly impactful for students with characteristics of dyslexia. Yes.
That's exciting because that's something that we have had on our radar for a long time to focus on dyslexia and have a more systematic approach to how we are going to address.
Oh, it's absolutely. I mean, we're doing such amazing work. And Dr. Brokens, that you have heard from, she works, she is incredibly passionate about that. She did a lot of work with that in Atlanta Public Schools, and she has brought that work to us and her expertise. And, you know, she has written grants to help us pay for these things. And so, we appreciate her so much and the resources that she has brought as well. I think it's just, you know, like I said, I think it's really great for all kids in the LETTERs training. I have been a part of that. It is intensive. I am learning so much about the science of reading and how we teach reading and thinking about how we thought we were supposed to be teaching reading. And it's really amazing and exciting work.
Wonderful. And I have just a couple other comments. I think the collaboration across the seven K through five schools and particularly, I know with math, that's fantastic work. So, thank you for doing that. It gives great opportunity for best practices to be shared. I think it's wonderful. Also, I love that we're taking this data-driven approach because I'm excited to see how we can actually measure what programs and initiatives are making impact and not just thinking that they're working, but knowing and showing those because these are significant investments, not just in time, but also in money. And we need to demonstrate, you know, through our community and to our students that we are putting these resources in the right place because they're all finite. And so I think this data-driven approach is very significant, and I'm excited to see how we're able to use that to really recognize what's working and what's not. So thank you for that also. Another comment that was, you know, this was so much information in this presentation. It was really a very, very good one, and this was exciting work. But I just wanted to note, I'm excited about the paraprofessional training because that goes back to an earlier conversation about how we can grow talent from within. And there are a lot of, we do have amazing paraprofessionals who, it would be nice if there was a track for them to also continue to get training. And some may want to be classroom teachers. So I think that's great.
Yeah, we absolutely do, and that is one of my, like, one of my heart initiatives is I know, talking with paraprofessionals, they feel sometimes undervalued and they don't feel like we invest in them. And so, the fact that our reading coaches, you know, now it's been led by Gail Hartwick, have invested that time and really provided the paraprofessionals with a deep dive into teaching literacy to our students because they are a big part of that classroom. And for them to have that knowledge, and I was just speaking with one of the paraprofessionals today. We had a paraprofessional attend the two-week summer training. So, you know, and she is interested, you know, in becoming a teacher, and she was super excited to get the email about the pathway that we were providing. And so, I think it's a wonderful opportunity for us.
Thank you for that as well. Thank you all.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Bean. This was an incredible report. The initiatives that you set forth were just very clear and concise. You know, kind of piggybacking on what Lewis said. I didn't feel that there was anything that had me lost because you did such great explanation. And I just love also how you are all evidently in the parts of this work that you're passionate about. I could tell the way that you were presenting it, that you were presenting exactly where you were supposed to be. So I do appreciate that. And there was one comment you made about the scorecard of our curriculum. When is that supposed to be?
So, we call it a culturally responsive scorecard. It's actually a tool that was created by NYU. And we have, we used it in our. And we have, we used it in our ELA adoption this past year. And it was actually, I was, one of the primary deciding factors when we got down to the final two curriculum. Curriculum?
It's getting late.
Yeah, it is. When we got down to the final two, because what we could see when you use the culturally responsive scorecard, it looked at various components, but one of the components that looks at is who wrote these books? Is it all white men that wrote these books? Well, in one of the programs, yes, as a matter of fact, it was. And then do we have diverse authors? And then the second piece that looks at is who is actually represented in the book? You know, and are we seeing positive representation of a diverse, you know, culturally diverse people? In fact, I was speaking with a teacher the other day and she said, I just wanted to tell you, like, we are recognizing this, we've got all these classroom libraries for our K five classes and they can see the difference in the book. Like, she said, I can see myself in the book for the first time since I've worked here. So, you know, it's great. And it's not that we haven't had, you know, books, but just, you know, in the classroom libraries that we are putting a conscious effort to diversifying that, to decolonizing, you know, the curriculum and the work that we have that we are showing all people are valued here is really important to putting it in the forefront. But I can send you a copy of that.
Do.
Yeah, 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 there are quite a few. You know, it's great for evaluating a whole curriculum because it does look at, you know, various pieces like social justice and how is that represented? How are women represented in the book? Are they always shown in the kitchen or not in the book? You know, in the curriculum, do you see women in the workforce?
Awesome, thank you so much, Dr. Bean.
Well, I want to just echo the thanks, Dr. Bean and your team. You guys did a great job on the presentation. I can tell you were practicing. So thank you for all the hard work and putting all the hours in for this presentation. Really, really good job. And just thank you for all the work that you do with leading this important work in our school system. This is one of the reasons we exist is for teaching and learning. It's part of our core business. What we're here for every day is to make sure our students are getting the best chance at being successful. And you guys are the heartbeat of that, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
All right, all right. Okay, so the board in your packet, you had received a draft of a recommended policy about naming of our schools, which are the, just talking about the naming of facilities where students attend class every day. I have a couple recommendations for change for you guys to consider before we take this to see if there's going to be a vote. First of all, the name of the policy, it should have put in the draft that it would be Policy 2.11, Naming and Renaming of CSD Schools. The correction for that would be Policy 3.5J5. Should be the correct because it really does fall, is a policy under the authority of the board. And I had put it under Policy Two, which is executive limitations. So that would be one recommended correction. And then in the body of the language, the last two sentences in the, kind of the meat of it, where it says the committee shall, starting with that sentence, delete that sentence and the next sentence. So the policy would end, if you're reading through the, this one, two, three, four, the first five lines of the body. And then it would, the recommendation to the board, period, those next two sentences would be deleted. And then the last recommendation for change is on number two, that the following shall apply, we would add school buildings where children attend and take out the word consideration. And then it would read, so the whole thing would reread. School buildings where children attend will be given names of local communities, neighborhoods, streets and/or landmarks. So that is the policy that is up for discussion and possible votes for the board.
Okay, discussion, yes. May I just ask a question to clarify? Are we considering, are we keeping the committee shall be?
No, we're taking.
Seven members or that's going out too?
That's going out too because that will be part of the administrative regulation that talks about what the team that will look like, will participate. Also, we wanted to, because we don't do, I had put a board member on there as a recommendation of the committee, but it makes sense, we don't do board members on committees, so that's taking that out. And then just really letting it be a committee decision, you know, letting the AR speak to more of the policy, more to how it happens, less of a prescribed board policy.
Yeah, that's just a suggestion. So I think that those are both good ideas. That amended the change, proposed changes, I agree with that.
Okay.
The other is the fourth, and it says, you know, we've got this policy and says, building's going to be named after, you know, communities, neighborhood, streets and landmarks. And then the fourth says, in the event compelling reasons to do so arises, new restrictions may be waived by now if the board. And I would propose that we delete that. Not because the board can't change its mind about a policy, but because the board can always change its mind about a policy. It's board policy. So we're supposed to have this living policy document that will amend as needed. And so there's no reason for us to tell ourselves that we can change it.
Understood, honestly.
The second point though is the truth is that this requires a unanimous vote of the board, which is not typical. But also, I'm not sure that that's cricket. I don't know that one board should be able to bind another and require a unanimous vote to change policy.
Sure.
So I think it's kind of misplaced and I would suggest that we just delete it. And if we ever want to appear from this policy or if the board wants to appear from the policy, they'll just make another vote and change it.
Anyone want to do that?
Yeah.
My only comment is if the committee is necessary, if the only names that can be given are the community, the neighborhood, the street or landmark, how much is especially, you know, if it say Westchester, you know, the only possi, with that criteria, the only possibilities would be Westchester, Scott, you know, I'm not sure what that, you know, it's a very limited conversation. And so I'm just wondering how much a committee is necessary with those four criteria? If you only, you know.
Should the policy say may? And I mean, like, we don't need a board to say that it's going to be a committee. Policy could say that the superintendent may appoint a committee.
May appoint a committee. It doesn't necessarily have to be. I mean, there might be a, we might have a consensus that it just makes sense with the name, where it potentially would be, only one name makes sense. And then in other instances, there may be a situation where we do want to put a committee together because there could be, you know, numerous amounts. We don't necessarily want to tie our hands to having to have a committee maybe, but just suggesting that that's possible if needed.
But the only thing is with that criteria, if we have, we've limited to that four criteria, shouldn't have numerous unless, well, you could have, I guess, depending on where it's located. Just for example, Russell has College Avenue, Jane and Anthony.
Yeah, I think so.
But it's only, you only have so many possibilities with that four criteria. I just don't know what circumstances you would have.
Have to decide whether to name a Claremont with an E or Claremont College.
Right, I just, you know, just what are the opportunities would show up with that criteria?
That's true. I think also too, if you think about it with how we are as a community, just wanting to be involved in that process, whether it's, you know, a choice between two names or four names, which is having that stakeholder involvement is probably, is really where my head went when it came to community. Just making sure that everybody felt like they were a part of the decision that was made.
And I agree with that. And, but I was thinking about the process because this was limited to just those committee members versus like the tally process.
With a survey.
With a survey where everyone would have an opportunity to participate. And so if we came up, if you have that four criteria, then everyone can vote on whether it should be the street or the neighborhood or landmark. And so then the community has an opportunity to engage in that process with those four options.
And where I interpret this and where my mind was when drafting this is that the committee would say, hey, let's do a survey of the community. Let's let them submit suggestions for the name and then we can look through them, decide are we going to do like a vote like they did with Tally, like, hey, what's your choice? So I think that's, and then give three recommendations to the board to select. I think it's more about having a committee, for me, get that stakeholder engagement, decide, hey, what is the steps that we may take?
I, it's just that the four criteria really, it could potentially be, you know, a waste of stakeholder time.
It could, yeah.
You can always submit so many, there are only so many streets. It's in one neighborhood.
Are you thinking there's something we could add to it or broaden, or you want to broaden that language?
I think, I think, you know, because I know we want to avoid the first names of people. And so I don't know what else there could be.
You could say that in the negative, that we're not going to name school buildings where children attend after people. Period. Leaving the other, this states positive, it tells you one of these four things. And you could say it in the reverse to say we're not going to.
What's not going to be?
I don't have a preference. I mean, I'd probably leave it the way it is, but I could go anywhere.
I think it's clear the way it is. I agree it's limiting, but we're saying it's a superintendent, we're leaving with the superintendent that she may appoint a special committee, she's not required to. She could decide just to do, you know, take suggestions from the community and then have a vote, not have a committee. I mean, so that, I guess that could be the approach. And how was it done with Tally? Does anyone remember? I mean, I remember there was a, there were, we, there was input from the community and then there was a vote from the community. It was non-binding, I recall, but it was pretty obvious.
I thought it was just the one that got the most votes.
Did we have a, did we have a, oh, it was served out, I know it was a recommendation of the board.
Yeah.
So we all agreed with it.
Yeah, Courtney ran that process. Do you remember Courtney? For Tally, what was the process for naming of Tally? Was it just an open vote or?
Well, we did a survey. We allowed people to submit suggestions and all of the steps. And that came, you know, Tally even was the vote. Boomed. So it was pretty obvious that that was the.
Your committee?
Yeah.
Totally asserted.
I mean, it was pretty clear that that was the obvious favorite, so there wasn't really any.
And that could be maybe how we approach it then if, if in the future for naming schools, if it looks like something that's going to end up being a little more involved and needs more intense attention, then a committee can be formed if we feel it's necessary.
We can figure it out.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can figure it out. It's pretty obvious.
I like the option of having, being able to have a committee. I mean, sometimes you want to get wider variety of stakeholder input, particularly if a lot of the voices that you may want to hear aren't being elevated or aren't, are kind of being over shown by a certain group. You want to make sure that you're getting those multiple perspectives. And I just worry that if you just leave it to X, you know, a simple process, that sometimes that's where you don't get to hear and lift the voices of marginalized individuals.
I think it's all fine. I think you can always have a committee though. Right? What does this thing say then?
Sure, yes.
It's always your pride.
Right, and I think taking out the verbiage that doesn't tie our hands necessarily to what that committee looks like is a good step to then.
So do we just want to delete that into that sentence that says, when a facility is to be named, dah 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 dah? Take out that whole sentence?
Either take it out or put shall and may.
Yeah. Any strong feelings from?
Shall, shall works for me.
I mean, may.
No, may.
Or may, may.
May working perfectly too. Dana, any strong feelings one way or another?
May a fine.
Okay, all right, so.
Are we ready to vote or is there an additional discussion?
I move that we adopt draft policy 3.5J5 as amended based on this discussion.
Do you have a second?
We need to say what the amendments were for the minute. Dana will capture what the changes are.
I've written them down here too.
All right.
I'll get this to her.
Perfect. Can we get a second from vice chair? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, chair votes, all right, we, okay. Policy amended. All right, and lastly, the monthly data report.
Those are just for information. Were there, yeah, were there any questions from the monthly data report? I'll just make a comment, I have, after, you know, kind of going back and forth on a couple things, we will, we have kind of landed on a very uniformed report format. So going forward, you will see it more, they will be definitely more uniform going forward so that that data, it'll be easier to kind of track as you look through the different schools.
My only comment, I said to everyone already, but I'll say it here in the meeting, that I think that the data is really important and I would like to see it presented so that we can see trends and so that we can see what, again, what impact we're making when we do establish new programs or interventions or changes. So I would love to see, like, are we headed in the right direction?
Yeah. And so my plan was at the mid-year, when we do our mid, big mid-year updates on our school improvement plans and our district improvement plans, that we share that trend data just kind of in the intermediate, give you those touch points so you can just kind of track it over time as monthly check-ins and then in January, we'll give a, and then summary of all the data performance and then again at the end of the year.
These are really good. I mean.
Aren't they great?
We've never seen anything this robust for each personal school like this, so.
You're doing a great job.
Yeah, this is really good.
And again, you know, talking about how much principals have to work, I also want to be cognizant of not creating too much of a burden.
Right.
On our principals. So let's, you know, somehow get the information that we need and then make sure we're also not overburdening the reporting burden.
And they use a team to do these reports. It's not just a principal we do.
It is a lot. And if monthly is too much, you know, maybe quarterly, like, I'm open to.
Well, I like the monthly reports. I need to keep my finger on how things are going.
About, you know, what kind of a burden it's causing and then evaluating what's most valuable.
Sure.
I do really like getting these reports though, and I hadn't focused on it as much in some prior meetings for whatever reason, but it's very, very good information. And I'm also interested in trends and whatnot.
Yeah.
You know, this is really, this is the biggest.
I have to give my sister a shout out. She, she's a teacher in Pennsylvania and she was telling me about what her school does because she's on a club and I was like, ooh, I like that. Will you share? So, yeah, I like it.
Yeah, and I like, you know, I don't want to overburden, but I think it's easier to spot the trends while we get the monthly report. And then the last time I said, when I last said that, you know, pretty much everyone was given us the same information, but I think having the uniformity will help because I was particularly interested, and we discussed this earlier, about seeing the discipline data broken down by subgroups consistently.
Yep.
And so that will be helpful.
All right, future date, anything that we need to point out? Shayna, anything that you need from us, the future date?
Well, I guess I can say that we are officially adjourned now. Or I can call the order. So I do, which I should do?
Let's call it the order.
Call the order. All right, calling to order our board meeting at eight forty-five. Adjourned at eight forty-five Tuesday, October twelfth school meeting. Adjourning at eight forty-five, Tuesday, October twelfth school meeting. Thank you so much for joining us, guys.